This conference will now be recorded.
Deb, can you hear us all right?
Um, yes, can you hear me?
I can, yeah.
Okay.
I think your microphone is on. Thank you.
All right. We'll meeting order. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone. First order of business would be to approve the agenda. Is there any changes, Bruce?
No change.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, with motion of second for approval of the agenda, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Do we have any conflicts?
Not here. Nope.
We need approval of our meeting minutes from the Board of Adjustment on February 25th.
And we're gonna be.
And we're waiting, you know, so move.
Second.
Okay, with motion of second for approval, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. What's your pleasure on the bills? I've had my questions answered.
Good. Move to approve the bills as presented. Second.
Okay, with motion of second for approval of the bills before us, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I'm just gonna note that as part of the, part of the bills, it included a payment to RCS. And of that, about a million, 1.2 million dollars is left in retainage. About half of that was, was part of that bill that you just paid. So you still have about 1.2 million in retainage, about half. And we talked to Tony, Tony talked to Bob Conway with RCS. And they think that that is a fair and conservative amount to retain, considering the amount of work that has yet to be done there. Basically, it's gonna be the punch list items. Does that make sense? Just to make sure everybody's aware of that. So we started to release part of the retainage as part of this last payment. Fair enough?
Yeah. What's the length of the time they're removing the rest? What's the length of the time they're paying the rest?
Probably more satisfied that all the punchless items have been completed.
Okay.
They've got some.
No longer work.
Yeah, yeah. It's just there's some seating to be done and something. It'll be a while out. And I think, just so you know, there's probably gonna be one more change order yet, to come yet. Yeah. So stand by.
All right. Do we have any travel requests?
I do. My first one is for planning and zoning. This is for Jesse, Jessica Lord to attend, to attend the FEMA E273 Managing Flood Plane Development through the NFIP in Pittsburgh, Maryland, from September 14th through the 19th, and to allow for a travel advance.
Amber represented us in that respect in the past. Why do we need to?
She said that, I guess, I'm just gonna tell you what she told me, that somebody else needs to know how to do the flood plane as well.
I think it'd be good to have more people know in case something happens, Amber, if she changes, moves on. I'd approve the travel request for planning and zoning.
Oh, second.
Okay, we have a motion of second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Okay, and the second one is for the Sheriff's Office for Matt Harden and Marina Cleveland to attend the basic SWAT operators course in Sioux Falls from March 31st through April 11th.
I'll move to approve that. Second. That's some serious training. There's a lot of rounds of ammunition being applied there.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion in a second for approval. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
That's all the travel requests I have, Chairman.
Okay, how about personnel?
I do have some. So I'll start with the Auditor's Office. I have a new hire, a step raise and a classification change. The new hire is Nicole Coons. She will start March 25th. She'll be a county employee one, grade one, base pay of 2233. And then Debbie Sargent will be moving to a, my first deputy, grade three, base pay of 3287. And this will be effective on April 6th. And then Krista will be moving to a county employee four, grade one, base pay of 2748. And her anniversary date was on Sunday. She's been here for nine years. That'll be effective on 3/9 of 2025. And this is all a result of the retirement of Del Nelson, who's been here for 30 years.
Motion to approve the pay raises and changes in the Auditor's Office.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I have three items in the Sheriff's Office. I have a new hire, Chantel Eaton, a correction officer two, grade three, base pay at 2661, and this will be effective on April 17th. And then a classification change for Tom Derby. He is going to take on the position of case manager. He will still stay as the lieutenant so they can utilize him as the, as the, as a sworn deputy. That will be affected today. And then, at the first of the year, we do a motion to approve the Sheriff's Office, Sheriff's Office positions. So we just removed the case manager and added it to the lieutenant spot. So it'll say, instead of two lieutenants, it'll say three lieutenants in parentheses, one of which serves as a corrections case manager. So I just need to amend that motion so that we know that those positions have been approved.
Okay, we need that in separate motions, I assume, though, don't we?
You can do them all at once. Yeah. Unless you wanna make them separate, that's fine. I'm fine either way. Okay.
They have separate. Okay, I think we understand.
Yeah.
Move with approval. Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Um, that is all I have, Chairman, of personnel requests.
All right, we're in your arena again. Auditorial conference, Fraser.
This is as of February 28th, 2025. Total amount of deposits in the banks is 25 million, 97,634.30. Included in that total is our bank balance of 24 million, 17,889.64, 1,079,944.66 in the money market. Total amount of actual cash is 1,350. Total amount of checks in the treasurer's possessions exceeding 30 days is 119,731.28. And then the cash, 9,185.54. Petty cash, 2,725, for a total of 25 million, 230,626.12.
We will approve the auditor's account.
Are you there? Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. A raffle, Brenda?
Thank you. I can do it. Mr. Chairman, submitted for your consideration is a raffle request submitted by an order of Republican women. This group has submitted raffle requests in the past. The details are set forth below. We'll be looking for a motion to not object.
So move away down and object.
Second.
Okay, with motion of second to not object on behalf of the raffle, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Review of the Attorney General's Expiation Open Meetings.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this comes to be a Senate Bill 74, which I believe the Governor has signed into law. Sort of summarize what has, what has happened here. That there's a requirement, the Attorney General's Office each year produce an information packet regarding open meetings. And then that, that information be discussed at, for example, county committee meetings. That's a law that won't go into effect until I first attempt to comply with that law, so I don't forget now. So included, along with Senate Bill 74, describing what the law is gonna entail, is also this packet of information. And, and so, we talk about this quite often at different meetings. So I think you're, and I provided similar information in the past. But if you look at it, if you have any questions, or if you want to eat further explanation, please let me know.
So anyone have any questions at this time, or can we review it in our leisure?
No questions, sure.
Okay. We'll have it reflected in the minutes that we have this discussion.
Sheriff.
Sir.
Good morning. You have the floor.
Dave?
Sat on the floor.
Yeah. Well, I'm happy to report that things have gone exceptionally well during the move. We do have some punchless items that we're still dealing with. There are a couple of those punchless items that will come down the road, I'm gonna say sometime in middle of April to the middle of May is when we anticipated. They involve a couple of builders. As Bruce indicated, we have another change order that's coming through. And that's just to try to correct a couple of, of all the inadequacies that we have identified through the build process. They're important to get corrected, and we've, we've got a good plan underway. Also yet to come are the monument signs, the signage that helps the public find us and know exactly where to drive. And that's an issue of climate. We gotta wait until the weather clears before they can really get that, that process going. Outside of that, I know it's, it tends to be on everybody's mind, but we are still well postured to begin receiving additional federal inmates from the Marshals. Where we are now is in such place where we have managed to secure our valuation from the Marshals. We have passed, the facility did pass on Thursday last week. We've submitted paperwork with the U.S. Marshal Service now in DC to identify our new address. And so, all paperwork has been filed. We are just waiting for that to be returned, and then our numbers will start to go up. So that's where we are. That's what I have.
Any questions for the sheriff? Okay, thank you.
I'd like to add, as I'm closing out here, that we couldn't have done this without a huge team effort. And that involved Mr. Diaz and all of his staff, Tim Eganon and all his staff. And, and it was really orchestrated extremely well, and it was to their credit as much as anybody's.
No, it sounds like everyone done a fantastic job. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Oh, Miranda. I know.
Mr. Chairman, I did add on your agenda, although I just spelled Sturgis, the Sturgis-Sandblond agreement. Just for continuity sake, I haven't had a chance to consult with the sheriff about that. And so, I will plan on having it on the agenda for your March 25th meeting as well. I have nothing new to report, and I advise the State of Sturgis that we're proceeding with all due haste.
Mr. Bay, would you like to come forward? We've got about 10 minutes of time that you could burn up.
Yeah.
On to miscellaneous items.
I have the contract from the state on the, the Maitland Bridge, so we can get that listing here.
The box cover, bud?
Yes. I have not seen the actual design plans yet. They are being finalized. Once this contract is signed and we submit this back to the state, we'll be able to, to get everything else in order with those. They'll have, they're just like, say, finalizing the design plans. And then we can go forward and hopefully go to bid with this fairly quickly. I'd like to go to bid with this while, while the Christiansen Drive Bridge is, is being constructed. And we were just informed yesterday that we have a pre-construction meeting on that bridge scheduled for Thursday. So I'll have a report on that for you next meeting. It would be nice if we could get the Maitland Bridge kind of piggybacked at the end of the, of the Christiansen Drive, Christiansen Drive Bridge. You know, in a perfect world, I guess, the same bidder could get them both, and it would be, it'd be great.
So you need authorization for yourself to sign the.
I need you to sign this contract. So we need authorization for the chairman and the honor to sign. I've got two copies. It has to be signed in blue ink, and these, these require the wet copy to be mailed back to the states. There are two to sign if we want a copy for ourselves.
Yes.
Okay, what's your pleasure, gentlemen? Is that, is that gonna be a cost of around $50,000 like you have there?
What's that now?
The Maitland Bridge.
80%. Oh, yep. The Maitland Bridge is a, it's an 80-20 project. Our grant amount was for 1,050,300. That's the capped amount that, that we can receive. If it's like the last bridge, it came in quite a bit under that, under the estimated budget. So the estimated design and construction costs. So I guess I, I, hopefully this one comes in lower as well. But that is the grant that was awarded to us on the, on the 17th, or the 27th of last month, when they, the DOT awarded all of the, the grants, the big grants. So I think it's gonna be in our benefit, but that, we have to, we're responsible for 20% no matter what. So we just have to see with the, when it goes to a bid, what, what our portion is gonna be.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the contract for the Maitland Bridge, or the bridge over Maitland Road, and authorize the chairman to sign.
And we second that. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval for the signature. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I also handed you guys all these resignation letters from our administrative assistant. Just to let you know, I do plan on going advertising for that position. And we'll have a little overlap there where I'd like to get somebody hired in early April. So there's ample time to train for a back-to-back again. So just so you know, that will probably be, be doubled up on a person there for a month or so.
That's understandable.
I think you can see there, we had a little rock slide as well. Kind of monitoring that as time. We got a, we had up there on the Kirk Road, we had a fairly large rock slide. It blocked off one lane, and we were able to get it cleaned up pretty quickly. We're just kind of waiting for that to settle out when spring kind of. We have a tree up there that looks like it's gonna fall right on the road. But we see those trees all over the Black Hills. They look like they're gonna fall, and they stay there for years. But we do plan on removing that. We're, we're actually, right now, looking to get a contractor involved in that. I'm not comfortable sending our people up there. It's, it's fairly high in the air and kind of straight down. I think we need somebody that's a little more of an expert in doing that type of work. So we're, we're getting some quotes on having that tree removed. We'll just have to see how it plays out. But so far, it's been holding. No more, no more slide has occurred since. Okay? And until we open these bids, I don't have anything else unless you have something for me.
I've had a couple of questions about the Titten Road Graveling Project. Do we have anything new to report? Any progress on that?
The only thing that I've been told, you know, it's still held up in Congress, I guess. We're still waiting on federal funds. I, I don't know where they are with that. Steve Kozlowski, he, he answered an email chain of that they're just waiting to hear as far as when those funds will be released. And then we have our issue to deal with, and that would be the actual, you know, some sort of agreement with the Forest Service. The Forest Service has provided that list of roads again of, of theirs that they want on a, on a snow removal or a maintenance agreement with the county. Some of the roads on that are the ones that we've talked about before. They overlap. Some of them are our roads, some of them are their roads. I would be more comfortable that they removed our roads from, anything that is truly a county road, I would like removed from that Forest Service list. I don't think we need to muddy it up by having an agreement with the Forest Service on a road that we have, you know, that we have control over. So that, that is where we are on that. But as far as the timeframe, yeah, who knows?
Anybody's guess.
Anybody's guess.
Have you had any interaction with the public on the roads that we're considering going to minimal?
Some.
I've had very little. It's actually been pretty quiet.
It has been. Some of the, some of the comments that I've, I've had, I've had in person, I've had two people show up to the office. They were fairly understanding. They understood how it was. And I've had some people call that were maybe a little more vocal. And, but it hasn't been that bad.
No. It was quieter than what I anticipated. Well, let's take a four-minute break, and then we'll open bid. Well, we got a public hearing to do prior to that. And then we'll get into the bid opening.
ID's for a little bit?
Yes. Mr. Chairman? We'll call the meeting back to order. And our next item is scheduled for 8:25, public hearing. And we're gonna be discussing Resolution 2025-16, which is a supplemental budget for the general fund, drug abuse fund, drug abuse in the amount of 35,000. Approval or denial on that? And it is 8:25. So this is, we'll let Brenda go through this, but this is a public hearing. So after you present it, Brenda, we will hold the hearing.
Um, this here is, at the last meeting, you authorized the opioid funds to Compass Point in the amount of $35,000. This is just giving me the budget authority to write the check to Compass Point for that amount. There was the assigned agreement from Hillary from Compass Point. And then also, at the last meeting, Mr. Jennings asked how much was left. There's $65,042.92 as of today. And then also, at the last meeting, Mr. Jennings asked how much was left. There's sixty-five thousand, forty-two dollars and ninety-two cents as of today.
Okay, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the body of the audience or online that would like to speak for or against this, you can do so at this time. We would ask that you would rise and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone in the body of the audience that wants to speak for or against? Seeing none, is there anyone online that would like to? All right, we'll close the public hearing and off to the board.
I guess I mentioned last time, and I thought we talked about it before in the budget hearing, budget hearing. I still feel that way that we're duplicating some of those things.
So, I, I guess I don't know how to explain it, Richard. So, during the budget, we, we give Compass Point an allocation for their, their services. This here is the opioids funds that we are receiving through that settlement that we got through the Attorney General's Office. These are above those, that allocation. And so, I give them, is that my?
Yeah, not, they're not, these are not taxpayer dollars.
Yeah, these are, this is, this is monies that we have received through, because there was a big lawsuit.
Several.
Several lawsuits.
And we're limited on the use.
Uses of these. And so, Compass Point and then that, that company out of Vale that came in as well, and then Drug Court.
Yeah.
They have come, have uses that meet the criteria that they can use these funds for, so we can disperse those out. But I cannot disperse, if I, I can have, this is the simple way to explain it. If I have cash, I can't spend it unless you give me the authority to do it through the budget process. If you give me, if you budget the money in, during the budget process, but I don't have any cash, I can't spend it. I have to have both. And right now, I have the cash, but we didn't, at budget time, we didn't know that anybody want, was gonna request it. So this is the request, basically giving, if you give me the budget authority, I can write the check. Otherwise, I can't. Otherwise, I'll get written up during my audit.
Sure.
Yeah, so that, that's basically, it's just, you have to go through the public hearing process in order to do it.
I'm not insinuating, Richard.
No, I know you're not. I, I'm just trying to explain it and because it's not, it's, it's complex.
Thirty thousand the month before that was a duplication.
Oh, of services, gotcha. Yeah, but that was from a whole different, in our agency asking for the funds. They do a whole different service in a whole different location.
Thank you.
Chairman?
Yes.
Richard, I think as far as we can tell, also between ABC, Compass Point, and the Drug Court, they're all using the money for different purposes. There's quite a, quite a range of things that can be used for, anywhere from prevention to, I think, treatment, to training. And so I think you're seeing a lot of those different areas being covered by the different entities. I can't tell that there's any overlap in, in, in the money being used. And I don't know that that's necessarily a bad thing if people are being served by different, you know, organizations, but it looks like it's being used efficiently.
Sure. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I make a motion to support Lawrence County Resolution Number 2025-10.
Second.
Okay, we have motion in a second for approval.
All those. Just one, one question. The sixty-five thousand in the opioid fund, was that before or after the thirty-five thousand dispersal? After.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
One more question. When do we get more funds?
They'll start rolling in throughout the whole year.
Really? Okay.
Yeah, but it just.
We need to spend them for good cause.
Okay, John, it is the time and place for the bid opening for annual supplies and materials. Magnesium chloride, hot mix asphalt, gravel aggregate, yes, and hot mix paper patching, precast concrete, cover, block covers, bridge beams, bridge decks units.
Thanks, sir.
And culverts. Correct. You have the floor, sir.
I'm gonna start with the fluoride. The first bidder is Rosane Construction. They do, this is for fluoride, so we do have a bid bond. They have a cashier's check in the amount five thousand dollars. Their bid price per magnesium fluoride per ton is two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and three cents. That's two eight seven point zero three per ton. The per gallon price is one dollar and fifty-five cents per gallon. That is one point five five. The, the bid price per ton for application is thirty-seven dollars and four cents. That is thirty-seven point zero four. Bid price to rent spray truck for forty-five day period is ten thousand dollars. Our second bid for fluoride is Dustbusters. It does also accompany a cashier's check for four thousand dollars. Their price for chloride per ton is two hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-five cents. That's two four two point three five. The bid price per gallon is a dollar and thirty-one cents. That's one point three one. The bid price per ton of application is twenty dollars for, application does not include material. That's twenty dollars for the application. The bid price to rent the spray truck for forty-five days is eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. That's eight two five zero point zero zero. We can make the recommendations of each bidder. We can wait till the end, however you want to do it.
You need time or do you?
Uh, no, this is pretty cut and dry. I would, I would recommend that, that we give the bid price to, to Dustbusters based on the, the price of the material per ton and per gallon.
Okay. Most responsible bidder waiving irregularities?
Correct.
I move with all the recommendations of our sideways superintendent waiving any irregularities and accept the bid from Dustbusters.
I will second that.
Okay, let's motion in a second for approval to award the bid to Dustbusters. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Also, I'd like to make sure you guys know that we will base our, our work this year based off of these prices and not what we budgeted. We will use the current prices that we just got and we will tailor what we do this year.
So you're adjusting the miles based on the budget, is that true?
Based on the bid.
Yes.
We'll keep it under the budget.
Understood.
Uh, next, we have our hot mix asphalt. Sacrosan paving is the first bidder here. Class E Type One, seventy-five dollars per ton, seven five point zero zero. Class E Type Two is also seventy-five dollars per ton.
John, what's the?
The last, the location is the Spearfish, Westview Drive Spearfish. Our next bidder is Johnard Paving. Class E Type One, per ton seventy-five dollars. Class E Type Two, bid price also seventy-five dollars. Spearfish location, thirty-two fifty, first avenue Spearfish. Simon Contractors for Hot Mix Asphalt. Class E Type One, bid price seventy-five dollars per ton. Class E Type Two, seventy-seven dollars per ton. Uh, the location plant is thirty-two seventy Sturgis Road, Rapid City, South Dakota. And that was it for our asphalt. And I would recommend that we accept all bids, you know, based on the highways department's discretion for location and price. To waiving any irregularities.
I'll move to accept all, all three bids for Hot Mix. Waiving any irregularities.
Second.
Okay, the motion is second for approval to accept all bids. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
This move is to gravel. Our first bid is Pete Lean. Their first bid is for three-quarter inch gravel surfacing material. Their Rapid City location is thirteen dollars and fifty cents per ton. And their Nemo Stockpile location is twenty-one dollars and fifty cents per ton. No loading, is, loading is included, both of them. On, uh, customer loading in, in the Nemo, we would have to load Nemo, so. The one-inch base also is thirteen fifty per ton in the Rapid City location. Twenty-one dollars and fifty cents per ton in the Nemo location. Same with the loading. Their three-quarter clean rock is a Rapid City location only. It's fifteen dollars per ton, loading included. One-inch clean rock, fifteen dollars per ton, loading included also at the Rapid location. Three-eighths chips from the Rapid City location. Type two A wash chips, twenty-five dollars per ton, loading included. Our next bid is from Johnard Gravel. Their one-inch gravel base from the Herm Pit is thirteen dollars per ton, zero for loading. Canyon Creek Pit is thirteen dollars per ton, zero for loading. The Eaton Pit is twelve dollars and fifty cents per ton and zero for loading. The three-quarter clean rock from Canyon is nineteen dollars per ton, zero for loading. Fisher Sand and Gravel is our next bidder. They're starting with their one-inch gravel base, State Line Quarry. It's ten dollars and twenty-five cents. Uh, and that includes loading. Their half-inch clean rock, State Line Quarry is nineteen dollars per ton and includes loading. Their three-quarter clean rock at State Line Quarry is sixteen dollars and fifty cents, and that includes loading. Their one-inch clean rock at State Line Quarry is also sixteen dollars per ton and includes loading. Three-eighths chips at the State Line Quarry are nineteen dollars and fifty cents, and that includes loading.
John, was the three-four sixteen fifty?
Sixteen fifty for three-quarters.
And then the one was sixteen?
And then the one-inch was sixteen.
Okay, nice one. Thank you. Sorry.
Do we have issues going across State Line to keep it turned off?
We have never had issues doing that. We also kind of use it on, we kind of generally take the back road there.
Well, I mean, that's close for you right there. I, I was just curious if, if there was any issues with that.
I don't think so. We're gonna work probably bids to all the suppliers based on location too, right?
Well, that would be my, my plan with the award, if we're being based on location, advantageous.
I don't wanna see Cory getting up here.
Yeah. You get a hundred and fifty miles, don't you? I think you get a hundred and fifty miles off State Line too with the license.
Interesting license, yeah. Yeah, for that, I would just. Let's see, moving on. Centennial Quarry, Simon. From the Centennial Quarry, three-quarter inch roadstone base, road base, thirteen dollars per ton, zero for loading. One-inch gravel base, Centennial Quarry, twelve dollars and fifty cents per ton, zero for loading. Three-quarter clean rock is seventeen dollars and twenty-five cents per ton, zero for loading. One-inch clean rock is seventeen dollars and twenty-five cents, zero for loading. And their three-eighths chips from Centennial Quarry are twenty dollars per ton and zero for loading. H and S, I think this will be our last gravel. H and S Gravel Brownsville Road, one-inch gravel base, thirteen dollars and fifty cents. And loading is thirteen dollars and twenty-five cents. It doesn't make sense.
That's pretty high.
I think there, I would, my assumption here is there's, there, it's twenty-five cents less if we loaded ourselves. That would be what I'm thinking this means. It's twenty-five cents per ton less if we loaded. Cause then their one-inch clean rock, it's eighteen dollars per ton and loading seventeen point seven five, so. My assumption is they're taking seven, twenty-five cents per ton off if we do our own loading.
Chairman, I may, I think we're probably gonna accept, again, bids depending on location, so.
Yeah, I would recommend we accept all bids, you know, for the highway department, for the most advantageous location and.
So, I, I say that in the context of, we're, we're making an assumption about that pricing, but I think if we're wrong, we, we have other bids to rely on.
That's correct. And I will double check this bid.
I, this looking, sorry.
Go ahead.
Looking at last year's, we put, so it says Brownsville Road, thirteen twenty-five per ton with twenty-five cents loading fee. So I think it should be thirteen twenty-five per ton and then it's thirteen fifty if they load it. And that, so that, that's how it was written in the minutes last year.
That's how I, that's my assumption is what they're doing. They just didn't write down that it's a negative number for loading. They gave us our, I'm, our loading price and.
This is the whole pick too, correct? Could you give me the one-inch clean? I did not miss those numbers.
One-inch clean, eighteen dollars per ton.
Good, thank you.
Seventeen dollars and seventy-five percent seventy. Seventeen dollars and seventy-five percent seventy-five cents. Move the follow recommendation.
Okay, I'll second it. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
All right. De-icing sand is our next bid here. Pete Lane is the first bid. We bid four thousand tons of de-icing sand. This is, the location is Rapid City. Source mileage to Lawrence County is forty-seven miles. The delivered price per ton is thirty-four dollars totaling one hundred and thirty-six thousand, zero, zero. From the plant in Rapid picked up its twenty-five dollars per ton, total price of one hundred thousand dollars even. What's that? I don't believe we required a bid bond for the, for the de-icing sand. This is from Simon. This is from the Centennial Quarry. Mileage to our spare fish yard is nine point five miles. Delivered price is twenty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents for a total bid of one hundred and nine thousand dollars and zero cents. One zero nine zero 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 point zero zero. From the plant site, Centennial Quarry, it's eighteen dollars and fifty cents, which equals seventy-four thousand even, seven four zero 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 point zero zero. And again, I would just move that we accept each bid. You know, based on the, the price of the most advantageous site. Motion to follow recommendation.
Second, second.
Okay, we have a motion to second for a recommendation. All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And we're down to paver patching, in-place patching of material. This is from Sackerson paving. Type one material, in-place patching is one hundred and fifty-five dollars per ton. And type two paving material is also one hundred and fifty-five dollars per ton. What's the difference in those two materials? Type one and type two, it's, it's based for the temperature. Your class E is your aggregate size in each material. Type one is generally used when it's colder out. Type two is more of a, a general type of pavement. You can use it in more, more wide range of conditions. I think generally we usually always, I think most of the plants are always making the type two around here. In the heat of the summer, the type one is a, it's a little, it's a little pliable, a little runny. But that's really the only difference. Price-wise, there's really no difference.
Yeah, thank you. Type one doesn't gel up in the winter time.
John or paving. Type one in place paper patching is a hundred and fifty dollars per ton. And the type two also is one hundred and fifty dollars per ton. And I would like to also accept each bid based on. Which, which one is available at the time.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to second to accept all bids on the hot mix paper patching. All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I got some technical data if you'd like it on that pavement as well.
Probably more information than we can comprehend.
I broke it down. So I can understand. Next, we have the concrete structure. Brinker materials. It's a pretty good deal. I don't, again, I don't think we want to go through every one of these. Would be our only bid that we have on concrete. Structures. They're the only ones in our area, so I would recommend that we accept their bid. For everything in this packet.
And you've got, looked at those numbers to, to see how they compare with last year, then?
I have not looked at them. But I will. You know, much of this, we don't buy very much at our level. Most of this comes through the contractor when we do like these box culverts. They generally all come from here and they're a part of the state bid or something, so. This just gives us the flexibility. If we need to buy a, a section or, or a part, we, we will be able to buy it, so. My recommendation is to accept this bid.
So I'll move that, due to the fact that we've only gotten one bid, I'll move that we accept the bid as, as presented for concrete precast materials on an as-needed basis.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second for approval. Follow recommendation. All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And then we also have our, the metal culverts and that as well. Up the Beadle County bid, we, they have it, True North has got the Beadle County bid and. I forwarded this to the auditor and we have all of the information that's from their notice to, to the accepting of their minutes. And I would recommend that we follow along and also authorized to purchase off of the Beadle County bid.
I'll move the, they're trying to be a county bid.
Second.
Okay, and a motion is second to follow highway's recommendations recommendation. All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Yes. John, did you need to go look at anything in the report back or is that?
I don't think so. I think everything's pretty cut and dry. All right, anything else? I have nothing. If you don't have anything for me. Any questions for John? Nope.
I believe we're taking care of him.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thanks Cory.
Thank you.
Happy birthday again.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, take a five-minute.
Still that item about. Was John gonna say?
I'm gonna do it on the phone like you did.
Yeah, we all got on the phone and say happy.
Turn the microphone off first.
I did, I had it off.
Man, we, it's on now.
Back to order.
Yeah, I think I got the four inches.
We will turn it over to you on a layout plan. Is that what we got?
Preliminary Maitland Partners. Maitland Partners. Twenty-five. It's twenty-five dash seventeen.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So the preliminary plat is just another phase in Maitland Partners four. And this is the same thing. We have the. We have. It could have been.
See the mom coming to this?
It did. Let me borrow your snappy book if I'm not in here. There, that would be easier. All right, so in that, there was as-built plans included in it. The highway department did go out and do his little report like he does. That's in there. And then you have the public right of way is being dedicated. The fire plan is the same as what we've had where they've been, this is the one that he's been like doing some and transferring the fire plan to the next lots and just kind of moving it along. This is the stuff that Sweetool has been in there doing. And then the preliminary plat is through seven through one forty-three. And this is, I haven't seen one for a while, but this is what John's been going out and doing a report for you guys kind of before and looking at it. He's, we've been trying to get it included. What happened to that?
Warm. Well, I'm making motion to approve before we get bombed.
I'll second it. Any further discussion?
Just, just noting that there was some concerns from a road superintendent about tree removal and culverts, so we'll get those be addressed before the finals. Want to get that on the record, yep.
Okay, all in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And then this is for just informational. I asked. It's telling me to switch camera. I want to say.
You don't have anything else on the agenda for this?
Yeah, well, they just asked Kevin to be here. There was some question. There was some question at the last meeting regarding the. The, we're working on the redo of the map, the joint powers agreement, and the city has approved it. And then we took it to planning and zoning and there was some questions. So before we go forward with bringing it to you guys on the twenty-fifth as an actual line item. I wanted, you know, Eric was there. He kind of knows what some of those were. Rick was there, but. I wanted to know where we need to go from here, I guess, instead of wasting another three weeks. City's already approved it and we decreased the overall three-mile area by a lot, so that's good. That was the goal. And then there's one area that was kind of in question and that's on the, the St. Ange Road where the Almanza property was. The one thing I'm concerned about is if we don't sign the same document that the city already approved. Then we're back to what was already in place, which is the big area. And I don't, I mean, our whole goal was to try to shrink that area and I, I think over just that one little area. Doesn't mean they still, they still have to go through the same process. They have to go through changes on names to do anything out there. So I think this map really shouldn't affect those decisions. So that's kind of where we're at. But we didn't want to waste any time. And so I asked if he could be here to just, you know, help kind of talk from the city side since the city did already approve that shrinking of all of that. Is that fair enough, Kevin? I mean, what else?
No, yeah, I'd say that touches that. We did have conversations with, you know, property owners for the Almanza property a couple of months ago. They, it's gonna be a little bit of a struggle for them to even try and develop right now. Just because of water and sewer. There's really not the facilities in place on the cities and to service them right now. But yeah, that boundary was just kind of teed up for if in the next, you know, about ten years, there is the opportunity that they want to annex. You know, there's the potential of, or if they start to develop within the county, having it within that boundary then starts to give us the ability to. Utilize our design standards for roads and other things, just so if and when annexation does come. We don't have some, you know, hotlage road design standards as we go up St. Ange, so that was kind of the purpose of keeping that in, cause it's. Almost adjacent to city boundary right now, so you know, as progression happens, it just kind of made sense to keep that in, so standards can, you know, stay generally the same.
Okay, but at this time, the city has no desire to annex or furnish waters or for, right?
They. Sorry. Unless an adjacent property owner at this time, there's no avenue to annex right now, but that could change here in near future. There could be options for water and sewer. They just would have to look at. Either doing some booster stations or something along those lines. So it's not, it's not entirely infeasible. But it's just not something that they're ready to do right now.
Okay.
So then we, we don't need to make a decision today at all. It was just because Kevin was able to come today. Giving you some explanation and then that's what we'll be looking at at the next meeting would be the actual, like, agreement. But just to kind of help answer some of the questions that had come up.
Sure, yeah. My concern, I, I brought this up at planning and zoning, was it was just that part along St. Ange Road that is zone agricultural one. I had some concerns about that just because it was, it was an A1, having that included in, inside the boundary for the, what are we, it's not a one-mile boundary. It's, what is the term?
Well, it's not really a one mile. We don't have.
It's a, it's a boundary of some sort.
We're trying to change that big three mile, but the only way to really do that is we have to have an agreement because it's less than three.
Yeah.
Is, is really what it comes down to. So we're combining both documents that we've always used, the joint powers agreement and the three mile into one, so we don't have the two. Kind of area that we have to keep track of. So we're putting them together.
Right.
In one.
I just didn't know what the term was.
Yeah.
Probably, do we have it made, joint power, so.
Yep.
So it was just, there's probably a hundred acres or less of that that's included within.